All right, item number 11. Financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014. Robin Bertegna.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Too tall of a step, I need to set some aside. Tonight, I will be presenting you with a final financial report for fiscal year 1314 that ended on June 30th. First, I will review the results of operations for the city's general fund and then move on to the city's water and wastewater utility funds. This is a summary of the general fund budget versus actual in thousands of dollars at the highest level possible, including the beginning fund balance as of July 1st, 2013. Total revenues, total expenditures, and fund balance remaining at the end of the fiscal year. The original 1314 budgeted expenses that were included in the adopted budget totaled 35.2 million. To that, the city during the fiscal year added another 1.5 million of appropriations approved by city council. Included in that were grant-funded appropriations of a million and $29,000. Prior-year purchase order encumbrance commitments of 303,800. The ICMA study of police and fire operations for 89,900. Strike team overtime of 131,400. And a reduction in other items totaling 1,400, which brought the total final adopted budget expenditures to 36.8 million that you see up there under the final budget column. Actual expenditures ended the year at 34.2 million, under budget by 2.56 million. The savings includes $259,100 in outstanding purchase orders that will carry over into next fiscal year. So from a budgetary standpoint, those dollars have in essence already been spent. $720,100 in grant-funded programs, which once again will carry over into next fiscal year. They are kind of like capital improvement program budgets, where the grant doesn't necessarily end as of June 30th, if the appropriations carry over into the following fiscal year. So the conditions of the grant can be met and it can be completed. So what I would categorize as the true savings for fiscal year 1314 is more accurately described as $1,587,400, which still represents a very significant savings of budgetary dollars for fiscal year 1314. To break that down, about 69% of that was from salaries and benefits. 30% was from material supplies and services, and only 1% was from capital acquisition items. The savings from salaries and benefits, you'll see some more details a little bit later on. And the savings occurred across almost all departments and all line items of the budget. And I'll show you the details of that also in some later slides. We ended the fiscal year with an uncommitted fund balance equal to 12.5% of the city's fiscal year 1415 budgeted appropriations. This is a summary of the city's economic stabilization reserve fund. It shows you the status at the beginning of 2010, the replenishment of it, and kind of where we've been through the years. It includes how much of it was used to fund deficits in fiscal year 2010-11 through fiscal year 1213, and how much was added to the economic stabilization reserve from operations this year during fiscal year 1314. The balance that was added to the ESR for 1314 was higher than anticipated when I put together the budget projections last year in April and May to bring forward to you for budget adoption for fiscal year 1415. Finance anticipated that that amount that you see of 636,133 would be about $150,000. I looked back to see where did I miss the mark when I put together the projections, and it was a difference of about $480,000. It was attributable to $225,000 on the expense side and $255,000 on revenues coming in higher than what I had originally projected at budget time. On the expenditure side, the departments had missed the mark by an average of $200,000 the previous two years, where they had ended up spending more by the end of the fiscal year than what they had projected at budget time. So I added $200,000 to the projected total citywide expenditures for fiscal year ended 1314 as a contingency. This year, they were right on track. They came in under their projection by 25,000. So kudos to them. I did let them all know that I expect them to be just as close on their projections for fiscal year 1415. We'll have to see how that works out, but amazingly close overall when everything was all netted out. On the revenue side, building permit revenues were higher than projected by 137,000, and recreation programs were 87,000 higher than projected. This goes all the way back to inception of the city's economic stabilization reserve fund and shows you what was utilized for operations for each of the years that we've had to tap into our reserves to cover our budget deficit. And then in the current year for 1314, the amount generated to show you once again the ending balance of the ESR. When it was replenished in fiscal year 1112 to coincide with funding the city's projected deficits of the three-year period of employee contracts that we negotiated. During the first two years of the three-year agreements, positions were left vacant intentionally in order to determine if the position was really needed, what was the impact on the organization if we didn't fill it. And we took our time filling positions, so we never used the full deficit amount as adopted in the budget. We never used the full ESR amount for the deficit we had savings each year. This fiscal year, what we saw was that we have more vacancies. We've got people that are retiring younger because of the city's retirement plans, and it's taking us a little longer to fill the positions. When I put together the staff report for tonight, we had a vacancy factor of 12.5%. And I know Human Resources was working hard to get recruitments completed and get people hired and put into place and serving the public. It just takes, it's a timely process. We also want to hire the right people. With that said, what I saw in fiscal year 1314 is we had more salaries and benefits saving than what we've had in the past. And I'll show you a graph of that in a little bit. You can see how the trend has been from year to year. Since fiscal year 0809, the city contributed a total of $6,350,000 in reserve funds into the ESR. Of that amount, we've spent about 1.8 million, leaving the remaining 4.5 million that you see here. The city's long-term fiscal plan anticipates that the deficit will continue until fiscal year 1718, after the city's pension obligation bonds are paid off. Revenues are growing, but so are employee benefit costs for retirement, healthcare, and workers' compensation. It is anticipated that the ESR balance shown here will be used to fund deficits until the budget is in fact balanced again. Having a surplus in fiscal year 1314 is more of an irregularity than a reality. I attribute it mostly to the vacant positions saving 1.2 million because we hadn't filled them fast enough. We just couldn't keep up with it. As personnel are hired to provide services, that savings will not be reoccurring. It is one time in nature. As an example, the city recognized the recruitment and retention issue with police officer positions and worked towards finding ways to fill those vacancies, including creating a recruit position whereby the city sponsored two candidates through the academy. So I think the city is also getting creative in how we're recruiting personnel. In these revenue slides, it's the top general fund revenues for the city. If you look at 0 to 100%, if the bar crosses the 100% and there's no light blue line, that means that we received more than 100% of budget. If you see a slice of blue, like you do for business licenses, it means we didn't quite receive our total budget amount that was projected. Property tax revenues were less than budget expectations by $73,800 or 0.7% of the amount budgeted. I looked at the details of that to see why. We had projected a 2% increase and assessed values were up 1.95, real close to the projections. And it had to do with two components that underperformed. The interest allocated to the city from the county on the property tax dollars, which is frankly expected because investment returns are very, very low these days. The yields the city sees on our portfolio, as Spencer will show you here in a couple presentations, very, very low. So I wasn't surprised by that. The other one that did surprise me, and I want to look into it a little further, has to do with the state property tax that they pay us in lieu of vehicle license fees that we used to get. That only increased by 0.8%. And I think there's a lag time there between when the state shows us the money and we see the increased assessed values. Sales tax, including the Prop 172 sales tax share and the master tax exchange agreement payments to Sutter County ended the year, 108,000 or 1% higher than budgeted. We had projected a modest increase of only 2%. And the average increase in the fiscal year on a cash basis for sales tax revenues was 2.8%. So we exceeded our budget estimates there, and I think I remember telling council at the time I provided you with the budget presentation that if I was too low on one, I would be high on the other, but the average of the two would even out. And they really did. If you look at the budget versus actual projections for the two, I think we're within about $10,000. Franchise fees were 46,200 more than budgeted, and I looked at that to see why. The receipts were higher than anticipated from Recology and AT&amp;T, whereas Comcast was slightly less than what we projected. Business licenses were 2.7% less than budgeted or 20,900 less than budgeted, but was 40,100 more than the previous fiscal year.
Robin, good question. What were the three on the franchise fees?
Recology and AT&amp;T were higher than what I had projected, and Comcast was slightly less. PG&E was right in there with what we projected. Yeah, I didn't comment on it because it was right, right where it was expected to be. Yes, we did. This slide is set up differently. It goes all the way out to 200% of budget because of building permits. So if you look right at the midpoint, that's the 100 percentile. And anything that the whole bar goes beyond that point, we received at least our budgetary projections. Recreation revenues were about 16,000 more than budgeted and 18,900 less than the previous year. Hotel motel surcharge revenues were 96,100 more than budgeted and 22,600 more than the previous year. I looked at the details of that to see why, because that was considerably more than what I had anticipated. And the increase is attributable to an overall increase in the revenues citywide for people staying at our hotels. But it was interesting to see too that our 1213 receipts were inflated due to catch-up payments from a couple of hotels that were delinquent, which is why I lowered the budget estimations for 1314. I didn't expect to see that again. And I compared all the different hotels we have in town that are paying our hotel motel surcharge to us to see which ones were up and which ones were down. And a couple of them were up pretty significantly. It's clear that they're getting a lot more patronage than they did previously. The CSAG revenues are related to the fire services that are provided in the former unincorporated area, formerly known as the Walton Fire Protection District. Those were about 7,600 higher than budgeted, so right along with budget expectations. Building permit revenues were 436,800 more than budgeted or 187% of the amount budgeted. And this was 395,900 more than last fiscal year. I looked to see why the increase was due to primarily the activity and one other component. There was an increase in both residential and commercial building permits that were issued during 1314, and the commercial permits issued included In Shape Toyota and the Kingsbury Expansion. There was also a big increase in solar-related building permit activity. In fiscal year 1213, solar-related permits totaled 87,000. In 1314, this grew to 259,000, an increase of 172,000 over the previous year. This shows you the history of the city's total property tax revenues. It's labeled in millions of dollars for the past eight years, fiscal year 0607 through 1314. This slide shows you that revenues peaked in 0708 and continued downward at a steady decline until fiscal year 1213, at which time they slowly began to increase again. I added this in, and I don't know how well you can see the very, very small actual dollars of average prices and median sales price. This is something that's provided to the city on a quarterly basis by HDL, our property and sales tax consultants. I watch these pretty closely because it tells me kind of what the housing trends are doing. And as housing prices go up, so do our property tax values and our recoveries of our Prop 8 reassessed values that have been reassessed downward. This shows that the average price and the median price of homes, by looking at the lines in the chart, you can see that home sales prices are on the rise again and in 2014 are back equal to the sales prices in 2008 when they were on their way down and equal to 2003 when they were on their way up. So when I look at that, it's an indication of property tax dollars in comparison to the overall economy locally and what we're seeing with our property tax revenues. Okay. Wow, I'm impressed. Very good. Those numbers are very smart. Moving on. This is a similar slide for the city's total sales tax revenues for the past eight years. Shows that revenues declined significantly for several years and then began recovering in fiscal year 1011. Sales tax peaked in 0506 at total sales tax revenues of $11,125,600. Comparing 1314 with an actual amount of $11,84,800, sales tax only remained down by 40,800. And I'm pleased to say that the fiscal year 1415 budget includes sales tax projected 11.43 million. So I fully expect that we will bypass and exceed at the end of 1415 and have our highest sales tax revenue year yet. And the budget amount is projected on an increase of 3.5% for fiscal year 1415.
Robin, one question on the property tax. I know it was back one slide, but, or two slides, I guess it is. On, on the property tax, is this typically lag a period of time from the market? Or is it pretty reflective of what the market actually is doing?
There is a lag because assessed values are as of January 1st of each year. So in January 1st of 2015, the assessor will look at values and set the rules based upon those values. So even if the market goes up significantly after that, it's not going to change the values in the rule. And we don't actually see those revenues until February of the following year. So for the values of January 2014, we collect those revenues beginning a whole year and a month later is when they actually hit our bank account. So it is a significant lag.
And we did what, 2.0, how many, what was the increase over last year? You said 2.0?
The assessed value increase was 1.95.
1.95. Have we projected for this coming year, or do we have those numbers yet?
Yeah, I have a projection in the budget of 4%. And the preliminary assessed values, which are not final yet, I don't believe they're final. Actually, they may be final because usually the final values come out in October, 6.2%, so over what I projected.
Thank you.
Beginning ahead of me. I'm giving you the 1415 financial report in February. This is a slide of the city's quarterly sales tax results on a cash basis. Something I share frequently by email and then when I present to city council. I'm pleased that there's mostly positive numbers up here, only three negative numbers. That was not the case several years ago. So we've definitely seen a change for the better with our sales tax data. The cash basis is really important to me because that's what shows up in the city's bank account via direct deposit that I can use to pay the city's employees and pay the city's vendors with. There's always adjustments made by Board of Equalization because somebody pays late or there's a misallocation and it's allocated to the wrong jurisdiction. And it eventually is caught by our sales tax auditor, HDL, and made right where the cash flow is adjusted in the long haul based upon these adjusted numbers. The adjusted numbers are very important to see, and I apologize. I thought I picked this. This is actually 0.3% and 0.2%. I'm not sure why they reverted back, but that's incorrect. Jumped off the page when I looked at it here, so my apologies. Those numbers are not correct. They're 0.3 and 0.2% decline. That said, the cash basis will eventually, the audit results will eventually catch up and the cash adjusted amounts will reflect what the adjusted basis is. The general fund expenditures, this year, 95.7% of the budgeted amounts for salaries and benefits were spent. That seems like it's a high number. It really isn't. That's kind of the lowest I've seen it in a long time. This is down from fiscal year 1213 where we spent 97.8% and fiscal year 1112 where it was at 98.7%. So it is a big reduction, and I mentioned that we had about 1.2 million in unspent appropriations for salaries and benefits. I looked back to see what it was in previous years. It's about double this year. In previous years, it was more in the order of magnitude of about 600,000. So we're definitely seeing the impact of vacancies on the city's overall budget. 89.4% of budgeted amounts for materials, supplies, and services were spent. The 10.6% which wasn't spent amounted to 835,000 in savings. However, that has to be adjusted for grants and purchase orders which will carry over into the following fiscal year. So the real savings at the end of the day is about 514,000. Again, total savings were about 2.56 million, but the real savings after deducting the encumbrances for purchase orders outstanding and grants more like about 1.5, 1.6 million. This graph here, even though it's very squiggly, the green line on top shows you the trends for salaries and benefits as a percentage of total budget expended. And it shows that in recent years, when budgets have been really hold-the-line budgets, departments have gotten closer to spending all of their budget dollars relatively speaking until this year. This year, you can see the green line for salaries and benefits and the yellow line, the dark yellow line for materials, supplies, and services. Excuse me, I got that wrong. The second line up here, the gold line is for total budget and the yellow line is materials, supplies, and services. Is really trending more downward because of the savings this year. I don't expect that to continue into the future. This is on a department-by-department basis and shows you the savings. I show this without subtracting the encumbrances or the grant carryovers because this amount is what you will see in the comprehensive annual financial report that's going to be presented by myself and reviewed by the city's auditor next. And it's important to me that the information that I'm providing to you coincides with what they're providing to you. But I also need you to know that this does include those other items as not being spent, and they will be spent next year. The two departments, if you will, that went over budget, the fire department, warrant administration and finance midway through the year that they would be over budget for salaries and benefits due to their constant staffing model and the need to cover shifts for a variety of reasons when they have somebody out on medical leave and backfilling with overtime. Medical leave, vacation, sick leave, et cetera. The other amount that shows as over budget in contingency and non-departmental was due to training and professional development that was authorized by the city. On a citywide basis, the entire city for the general fund lives out of a pooled account. We added budget dollars to that in fiscal year 1415, recognizing the importance of development of city staff. And this is a line item by line item. It shows you the individual categories within the city's budget and how much savings was generated or how much that item went over. And because we've held the line on material supply and services budgets, the things that have gone over such as heat and power, travel, and meeting, and postage, and freight, those have not been increased in anybody's budgets. If they go over in one line item, they're told to make it up with savings someplace else because we look at the bottom line dollar for each department, not the individual categories. The second page of it, because we've got lots of different categories where finance tracks the expenditures on a citywide basis. Something I do want to call your attention to is 523,000 savings down at the bottom. Almost looks like we're budgeting for dollars and not spending them. I assure you that that is all grant-related programs that will be purchased and bought in fiscal year 1415. It's all carryover dollars. It's not money that is just there and not intended to be spent. And those grants are police and fire-related. This is a comparison of the city's citywide retirement costs and includes not only what we pay to CalPERS but also what we have to pay for the debt service on the city's pension obligation bonds. And it looks kind of like the cost didn't go up that much in fiscal year 1314. So I looked to see what they would have been had we not had the vacancies. And on a citywide basis, they would have been approximately $625,000 higher. The general fund would have been about $372,000 higher. So the vacancies also cut down on the retirement cost. The city budgets for retirement costs based upon the rates provided to us by CalPERS in the actual reports, we know for every dollar payroll how much it's going to cost as a percentage contribution to CalPERS. But if we don't have somebody sitting in the seat and paying them, we don't pay CalPERS, which is part of the reason CalPERS has modified their actual reports. And in some cases, it's going to start charging us a flat fixed fee for some of the contributions because they're seeing that too. With vacancies, they don't get as much in contributions as what was anticipated when they put together their rate structure.
Robin, one other question on that. Also, the furloughs impact this too, is that correct?
Yes, they do. These costs would be 10% higher if not for the furlough because if we're not paying the payroll, we don't pay the PERS on the payroll. This is an overall historical perspective of the city's revenue and expenditures, with revenues in blue and expenditures in the yellow color that you see with the dollars associated within each of the bars. What it shows is how much the city has contributed from the ESR at the very top to cover the deficit beginning in fiscal year 0809, the city's first deficit year. And I changed the color for fiscal year 1314 to show the gold that we contributed back to the ESR because revenue has exceeded expenditures for fiscal year 1314. Unless there's any further questions related to the city's general fund results, I'll move on to water and wastewater.
Any questions and stuff? Go ahead and continue, Robin.
This is a summary of the budget versus actual for the city's water utility. It includes the operating revenues, grant revenues, capital connection fee-related revenues, the SRF surcharges, along with total revenues. This 66.7% looks pretty awful. It's just because, again, grant revenues span more than one fiscal year. So if you look at our grant revenue budget of 11.9 million, only 3.5 of that was received. And it wasn't even actually received in cash by the end of the fiscal year. It was accrued as receivable because we had spent that much and we're waiting for reimbursement from the state for that. The actual revenues from operating revenues, I looked to see how much we took in compared to what we budgeted for actual charges to our user customers. And those were half a percent more than budgeted. They exceeded the budget amount by $1,238. Very, very close to projections. Other revenues were higher than budgeted by $49,600, and that was related to water sales revenue and a rebate from PG&E for energy efficiency improvements. The revenues here are only shown through June. It was during the ensuing summer months that the city began implementing the water conservation education programs in response to the severe drought. the water conservation education programs in response to the severe drought. That's when our revenues really started to decline. I saw the peak month in October, where conservation had reduced consumption by twenty percent and revenues by thirteen percent. And I'll be providing you with more detailed information on that when I bring forward the mid-year financial report for fiscal year fourteen fifteen in February. But staff does continue to monitor those. The capital connection fee revenues in the water fund are four hundred and fifty-five percent of budgeted. Those are disproportionate in comparison to the sewer fund capital connection fee revenues. Staff looked into that to see why, and what we found was that several commercial construction sites, including Sierra Central, the courthouse, and the new John L. Sullivan dealership, paid for their water connection fees during construction and typically had more than just one connection fee that they paid because they also paid for a landscape irrigation meter in addition to the regular water meter. Additionally, the water construction, water connection fee was paid during construction, but the sewer connection fee wasn't paid until just prior to occupancy. So there was a delay there. Operating expenses ended the year at ninety-two point five percent of the budgeted amounts or five hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred less than the budgeted amount. Compared to fiscal year twelve thirteen, I was like, compare one year to the next to see what the trend is for expenditures. Total operating expenditures were three hundred and eighty-three thousand more this year than they were the year before. This is the city's water debt coverage ratio. We look at the city's total revenues, both operating and capital, subtract the city's operating expenses, come up with a net amount, and then divide debt service to determine what our capacity is for continuing to make our debt service payments we commit in our bond documents, that we will maintain that ratio at one point two or a hundred and twenty percent. You can see from the bottom debt coverage ratio that we have more than maintained that every year. The budgeted amount for fourteen fifteen is higher at one point nine four. With the conservation we're seeing, I don't anticipate it going down too much. I expect it'll stay right about one point eight percent because we never spend everything we budget either. But revenues for the water fund will definitely probably be less than what we budgeted. And again, I'll provide you more information in February on that. The other item of consideration I just want you to be aware of is in fiscal year fourteen fifteen, the revenues include one point six million in capital connection fee revenues that are not anticipated to be recurring, that have to do with the two hundred and twenty connections related to the Prop eighty-four water line project that we'll be doing. So in future years, you may see the budgeted amount with that going down some as a budget amount, but still expect the actual to come in probably right in line with what it's been historically. This is the city's wastewater utility. Shows you the summary of budget versus actual for it. Revenue's ended the year at a hundred and three percent of the budgeted amount, with the actual revenues being three hundred and thirty-five thousand more than budgeted. So pretty close when you're talking about a budget of millions of dollars. Capital connection fee revenues were two hundred and forty-nine percent of the amount budgeted, or three hundred and ninety-five thousand more than budgeted. And that's due, again, to the construction activity that we've seen with both residential and commercial construction. Operating expenditures were eighty-four percent of the amounts budgeted. The savings equated to one point four million. I was looking at the details to see where the savings was originated from, what categories, and it was pretty much spread throughout. Five hundred thousand with salaries and benefits, heat and power, a hundred and forty-six thousand, professional services, two hundred and twenty thousand, operations and maintenance, a hundred and sixty-two thousand, and chemicals, two hundred and thirty-six thousand. So anytime we can save, we certainly do. I'd be nervous if it was all in one category. I'd wonder what was going on, but when it's spread throughout, it doesn't make me feel at all uncomfortable, especially when I compare it to the previous fiscal year. And this year, the expenditures were down forty-seven thousand from the previous year. So not a significant change when you're talking about millions of dollars of expenditures. And I do also want to mention that the salaries and benefits, which are approximately eighty percent of the city's general fund budget, very different in the water and wastewater funds. They're more about thirty-three percent of the budget. So a much smaller amount because the operational costs are so much higher. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions? I do have one question, Robin. On the capital there, where it was two hundred and forty-eight point eight percent more than what was budgeted, is that impact fees or connection fees? Is that what that is?
That is.
So does that go to retire bonds once we get that extra money or what is that money? Does it go into the general fund here?
No, it does not go into the general fund. It stays in the capital connection fee account fund. We have a separate fund that we use for maintaining that and is used for either projects that need to be built that are driven by new development or used to pay debt service on the outstanding bonds that were used to construct something that was needed because of new development.
All right, thank you.
And I apologize. I think I jumped ahead of myself. The debt coverage ratio for the wastewater fund. Didn't mean to leave that out. We do also meet our debt coverage requirements on the wastewater fund, even more so than we do on the water fund.
That's still the one point two also, right?
It is. Yes, it is.
All right, any further questions? All right, thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
All right.